We're convening the June 13th evening session of the planning board. And given our small audience, we won't have to go through extensive comments, but just to let you know for safety reasons, the two exit doors, exit down to the lobby, out the front door. I don't have any cards, but we'll call the applications in order and move on from there.
Roll call?
Roll call. Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
Secretary is here, Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
Board Members Blaney and Zuccarelli are absent, but we still have a quorum.
Terrific. Some rise for the pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first agenda item is Rothman Dynasty. Matthew, are you?
No.
Oh, you have, okay.
Are we clear?
Are we okay?
We have notice.
Great.
Notice of public hearing, please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, June 13th, 2019, at 6:00 PM prevailing time, at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the pre-application entitled Rothman Dynasty. The pre-application consists of a standard plan with two lots on a 350,647 square foot parcel. Proposed lot one contains 80,000 square feet and fronts on Lower Seven Ponds Road. Proposed lot two contains 81,524 square feet and proposes a 189,133 square foot open space parcel, situated in the CR-80 zoning district, situated within the agricultural overlay district, the New York State archaeologically sensitive areas, and contains New York State DEC freshwater wetlands on site, and is located at 27 Lower Seven Ponds Road, within the hamlet of Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map Number 9001132-1.2, by order of the planning board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning for the Rothmans. Excuse me. So, the property is located at 27 Lower Seven Ponds Road. It's also known as Lot One of the minor subdivision of Watermill Land Corp. that was filed in June, June 23rd, 1988. It is located in the agricultural overlay district and is comprised of 8.5 acres or 350,647 square feet, and has frontage on both Lower Seven Ponds Road and Seven Ponds Town Road. Excuse me. Approximately 4.34 acres of the parcel are heavily vegetated freshwater wetlands, delineated by the Town Environment Division in January 7th, 2016. The current map is considered a yield map and shows two proposed lots of approximately 80,000 square feet with a proposed open space parcel that begins at the wetland boundary. The property is also burdened with a conservation easement that's dated December 16th, 1987, and includes the entire wetland area as well as some of the existing vegetated woodland upland space. The proposed current yield map, it shows a 30-foot wide driveway area on the proposed lot two to access both Lower Seven Ponds and Seven Ponds Town Road. A revision to the access is in process to reduce the area to 20 feet wide with a 14-foot common driveway, well, not a common driveway, driveway access, sorry. An irregular shaped wetland non-disturbance non-fertilization buffer with a minimum width of 50 feet is currently proposed. That includes approximately 30,153 square feet of existing conservation easement with an additional 21,078 square feet, for a total of 51,231 square feet to be preserved, in addition to the 4.3 acres of wetland. At the May 9th meeting, we discussed providing a cluster plan. I've just recently spoken with my clients with regard to this. They were away for a number of weeks, so we finally spoke, and I explained everything to them, and we are in the process now of putting that map together. So, I believe then we'd probably have to leave this hearing open until you receive those changes.
You can adjourn it, Brett.
Sorry.
For the cluster plan?
I should also mention that the proposed lot one currently contains a single-family residence that we recently upgraded the sanitary system to an IA OWTS through Town Conservation as well as the Suffolk County Health Department. We provided a copy of the updated CO of the property with the application that's dated February 6th, 2018, which is around the time my clients took ownership. For a single-family dwelling with an unfinished basement and shed, the shed has since been demolished and was part of a wetlands permit. The open space will be contiguous to conservation easement on the parcel to the east as well as Flax Pond, which is Town Trustee owned.
Did you say you're preparing a cluster plan?
Yes.
Because the plan... We have a cluster plan in front of us. That's what I'm saying.
That one, Jackie had basically said that...
Oh, because there's only size lots, yeah.
It's considered standard because we're proving that we can do a yield of two lots of 80,000.
Oh, I see, okay, sorry.
So, we need the cluster.
You're right.
So, we are going to be working on a cluster plan that will more than likely increase the size of the open space to include the rest of the conservation easement and the buffering wetland area, so that ultimately the two lots should come down to less than 60,000 square feet for our 40 setbacks potentially. So, we're working on that right now to see how that all plays out, and we'll provide copies for discussion as soon as we have them.
Okay.
There's also two curb cuts on Lower Seven Ponds. Is that going to be changed also?
Yeah, it looks like there's two.
It looks like there's two.
The two accesses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's two curb cuts right?
Yeah, because what they're hoping to be able to have some kind of a driveway that would swing around so that they do have access to both roads, being that Lower Seven Ponds is, they're about three, two lots actually from the stop sign. So, it's kind of difficult to exit the property sometimes, so that's why they're trying to get this.
Yeah, no, but there's a second, from Lot One, there's also a curb cut on.
Right. So, this is the existing one.
Existing driveway.
So, they would then be proposing this new.
One additional.
Yes. And then this one.
Yeah, I kind of sort of question the two access, what each road for that second lot.
So, you're saying you'd be more interested in doing something that's maybe here and then cuts across sort of thing, or?
I think you have to look at it, because usually it's not preferred having my current two curb cuts set.
Well, Lower Seven Ponds is busy, and it's...
Yeah.
It's busy in that section.
Seven Ponds is less busy.
I think that should be looked at.
I'm questioning two access roads to one house, and then you guys are questioning the number of curb cuts on Lower Seven Ponds.
Right.
It's just seems, now that we've got three curb cuts.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
Somewhat excessive.
Well, you could combine the two Lower Seven curb cuts into one cut, just move that one over, just straddle the property line.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is if we were to do something that would straddle both property lines. Like I said, we are preparing a cluster map, which may change this line.
Take you, and take you up and over.
It may actually put this more in between both lots, but that's something that we will definitely consider when we revise the map. And, yeah, I mean, they're kind of meandering across the property to get to their current house, and they could essentially do the same thing for this lot. Okay.
Any other questions on the board?
Sure.
We do have a comment. Yes, please.
I'm...
No, because you have to come to the podium.
I'm here for it.
Sign your name.
Was it?
Do we have any cards, Patty?
The sign.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do I need to?
No.
No, you can leave it.
All right, cool. All right, so I am, I am the son of the owner for 96 Seven Ponds Town Road. The property right to the right of it, which this is the border, we own back here around the, where's Flax Pond?
Up to town.
Yes, so we would be right here. You see where the public access is? We're the next property over. We have eight acres of wetlands right there, and...
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Robert Paul Winnicky.
Thank you.
And I'm here representing Dorothy Winnicky. We're curious about the environmental impacts, being that we do have eight acres of land on the other side, that is all wetlands, and we bought that in basically the same type of situation in 1994, where we basically signed an agreement not to subdivide the properties. And I'm wondering if the same agreement applied here.
Who did you make that agreement with?
I'm not really sure. I don't really know the legal ramifications of it, but I'm also really worried about the environmental impact on us and the environmental impact on one of the few cattle ponds in the area.
Well, if you look at the map, most, all of the wetlands is going to be preserved.
Mostly. Are they going to be having access to the pond?
Uh...
No.
Well, I mean, through their backyard, as they do now.
Right, because right now there is only a certain amount of access to the pond, and we actually do have the rights to one of the only two docks on the pond as well.
Well, I mean, right now they could, unless there's some prohibition, they could walk right into the pond, no, from their property?
Right, well, I mean, walk-through is not a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, if you've ever tried to walk to that pond?
No, I know.
Yeah, no, you'll be knee-deep. Yeah, yeah, it's definitely a swamp.
But they can't put a dock or anything along that.
Right, but I'm still wondering what the, if there was an environmental impact plan done on this.
Well, the property is going to be donated to the town for preservation, so...
To the Conic Land Trust?
No, the Southampton.
To the Southampton?
Yeah.
To the Southampton, yeah.
And it's going to be for preservation purposes. In other words, the town can't go in and put a public dock or something like that in.
Right, well, yeah, I know they wouldn't do that anyway, yes, yes.
So, it's going to be preserved and then dedicated to the town for...
And now, what are the size of the lots? Three and a half acres plus?
I think what we heard, right now, the map you're looking at shows about two lots of 80,000 square foot, but they're going to be reduced, they're going to be made smaller, so...
Right, but including the other land that gets them with the three and a half acre mark?
No, no, that's 80,000 square foot of the upland area, but it's going to be reduced even further, so more land will be going to preservation.
Right, because I know when we bought the property, I don't know if the law's changed back then, you had to have a minimum of three and a half acres to put a house on the property.
I think the zone might be changed.
The zone might have been changed since then.
Yeah, well, the zoning line, I don't know where the zoning line, this is in the R...
80.
R-80 zone, so you need 80,000 square feet of upland to, for a house lot.
Right, 100, and at least 100 yards from any wetland or body of water.
Well, you can't build...
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct, yes, or clear, correct?
Non-disturbances, 100 feet, structures is 125, and I think septic is 150.
Okay. Well, thank you for answering my questions, I really appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming down.
Do you have anything more you want to say? Yeah.
I think I understand what he was saying, the first point about not, no subdivision. As I did indicate, this is part of a prior subdivision from 1988, so if they purchased the property in 1993, they may be part of the same subdivision, I'm not sure exactly, I'd have to look at the map, but technically there is a covenant on this that there is no further subdivision, so it, Jackie explained to me that during final application, if we were to proceed with this, that then the planning board would have to, I guess, rescind that and then approve this subdivision with further covenants and restrictions for no further subdivision of these lots.
And likely by a majority, plus one.
Yes.
What was the purpose of no further subdivision?
Yeah, was it a covenant?
Well, I guess, because, I guess that's a general condition on most subdivisions, right?
Well, without prior planning board approval, but, you know, the, given the sensitivity of this environmentally.
Right.
Perhaps it was placed on that, was it a covenant? What was it?
I think it was just part of the general CNRs for the subdivision.
Sounds like a covenant.
So, are we allowed to process the subdivision prior to amending that covenant?
I think you can process it, but you can't, you certainly can't approve it, and any approval would have, assuming for argument's sake that it is a covenant and that's what it says, then you'd have to amend, authorize the amendment of the covenant as part of your approval process.
Yeah, that's what Jackie explained to me.
Because in prior situations, the pre-submission report, pre-application, has basically directed the applicant to research why the covenant was placed. Oftentimes, it's, it was bargained for like, you know, let us have more lots here and we'll agree to no further subdivision, so you'd have to find out why that covenant was placed before it's waived.
Okay.
Go back to the original map.
I may already have that, I have to check.
Okay, so are there any, are there anyone else who'd like to speak to this application? If not, we're going to adjourn this.
To the 11th, 30 seconds.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we have nothing, I'm sorry.
We have nothing. Um, we're trying to...
We want to keep it 25.
We want to keep it light.
This is nothing.
Yeah, this is light, yeah.
Yeah.
So, June?
July. July 25th?
I actually can't be here that day.
Okay, you want to go into the first meeting in August then?
What's that date?
August 8th.
Okay.
Okay, so we're adjourned.
That'll give us plenty of time to get a map together.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're adjourning it to August 8th. Motion by Dennis, second by Phil, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent. Okay, Saltweed Associates?
Would like to read.
We have notice?
I just didn't have David a posting. Thank you. We have proper notice.
Please take notice, said in accordance with the town code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held at the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, June 13th, 2019, 6:00 PM prevailing time, at the Southampton Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton Road, to consider the covenant amendment application entitled Saltweed Associates Lot One. The amendment is said to cut, the amendment to set covenants and restrictions to common driveway easement agreement for Lot One associated with the subdivision to include that portion of the existing driveway built outside the common driveway easement agreement along, located along the north side of the described meets and bounds description. The lot is located at 915 Seven Ponds Town Road, within the Hamlet North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 979-1-43.20, by order of the planning board of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board, staff and council. My name is Jody Giglio of Bennett Enterprises with offices at 1600 Caleb's Path Extension in Hoppock, New York, here on behalf of the applicant. The Saltweed Estates subdivision map was approved, I believe, in 1988. There was a common driveway that was proposed to access all the lots. The common driveway was built in 2002, and it was built on Lot One, not in the easement area. The subject premises is Zone CR-200. This is Lot One of Saltweed Estates. There, the lot area is 240,036 square feet or 5.511 acres. The allowable clearing was 36,005 square feet. The driveway was paved, as I said, in 2002 on the lot, resulting in 10,400 square feet of clearing on Lot One. By increasing the clearing on Lot One to offset the clearing that took place due to the road installation, you would restore the value of the property, because as, as I said, on 5.5 acres, they're only allowed to clear 34,000 square feet, so if you equate the road, then they're only allowed to clear 24,000 square feet, and it really impedes the development of this lot. The applicant is requesting an increase, increase in clearing on his lot, and therefore a covenant modification. I have spoken to several of the neighbors that were a little bit confused about the application. I have emailed the map to several of them. I did get a response from Mr. Silverstein this afternoon, who just asked that if there were additional clearing permitted of the, to offset the clearing that took place for the driveway, that it not be put in the side yards to protect and preserve the rights of the adjoining property. So, I think that the clearing could take place within the building envelope that currently exists on the property when the land was subdivided, and that wouldn't be an issue, and we just respectfully request a modification to the covenant to allow for the increased clearing to offset the clearing that took place for the roadway. And this is, I've highlighted the maps to show where the driveway is on my client's property. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
No, I think we're okay. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this application? None?
Who's not?
Yes? Please come.
You don't, you don't need to put it down. Just state your name.
You mean, you can't spell it?
State your name for the record.
My name's William B. White, 445 North Main Street. I've lived in this town most of my life. My family has had lands in the wood, woodland in the Marine area for many, many generations. This was a land of woodcutting, fence posts, blueberry picking, horseback riding. It's now become a very desirable developmental area. We have the parcel at the end of the proposed road of 13.9 acres, came down through my family for many generations. My mother, who was six months short of 100 years, died about two years ago. My aunt, Jane Seaberry, is still alive and with us. We're concerned about how this development happened, was it properly planned, was it properly, was, was there proper supervision of the installation of this road, et cetera. So, I'm here tonight basically to say, we have 13.9 acres, it could possibly result in three, five acre lots, and if there are going to be changes to this road, or if there are going to be improvements made to this road, possibly we should be including all of the property owners that adjoin this road to see what kind of improvements might be made to bring it up to town road standards. We feel that it's kind of been a slipshod, haphazard development that has happened there. You can see by the shape of the lots, those people needing clearing restrictions, those people needing lot line modifications, and would like to be included in this discussion to see if we can formulate a process into which we can bring a proper road into this property.
Can you point out on the map where you are?
Not on this map, but I can give you a certified survey.
Just wait over here, okay. I see it. Formerly Marilyn Seaberry, right?
Well...
We have it here.
Yes. You've got it?
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
Fine. It's this large parcel of property here.
How do you get access to that?
How do we get access to that? That's a very good question. In the old days, we just went across other people's...
No, I mean, does it have deed of access to a town road?
Does it have deed of access? No.
Or is it, it's landlocked?
I would suppose it's landlocked, but the maps that I have say on both Wilderness Trail, see offer of dedication to the Town of Southampton for future road per filed map, and up, this road apparently doesn't have a name, but this is the road that's subject to tonight's hearing. It also says, see offer of dedication to the Town of Southampton and common driveway for, per minor subdivision. So, my question is, if this has been offered to the Town of Southampton to develop a proper road, where, what is the status?
The town would have to, someone would have to approve the road before the town...
The town doesn't do the work, it has to be done before we...
No, I do understand that, and I think we're, we're here tonight to basically say, we would like to investigate what that, what that process may be. If we're going to change the road, move the road, or if we're going to, just here to give somebody clearing restrictions?
This is, this big deal.
Is this a driveway or a road?
It's a driveway. But there is a reverter in the original subdivision application that said that if a road should be built, then the town, then that would be dedicated to the town, so if this gentleman would like to make an application for his 13.9 acres in the back, then that would be the subject of discussion, and then the road would have to be, it would then convert to a road if the planning board decided so, but the subject matter of today is that the road was put on the, on my client's property. Not that the road's coming out, not that we're changing the road, but just that, you know, and the planning board could reserve the right to take this driveway and turn it into a road at a later date if this gentleman's application required him to build the road up to town standards.
So, your client is Dell?
No, my client is Comke. K-O-H-N-K-E, Lot One.
That's not the name on the, on the application for this board.
No, it's Saltweed Estates Lot One.
That's the name of the map.
Yes.
So, this road would lead right into...
So, Dell is using this driveway, right?
Yeah.
There are a number of people, I can give you the list of the people that were notified that actually own the surrounding properties that have access to the driveway easement on the property, if you'd like to see that. These are who the town recommended that we send the letters to.
So, this piece of property had an easement on it?
No.
Give, far away, no.
I don't know if that helps.
Where did the easement rise from? Is it on?
That's her client here.
The creation of these lots?
This is independently on.
From the creation of these lots, and all of these properties around have easements?
Yes, there's a, there's a common driveway easement agreement, which is why I had to send certified letters to all the people that have rights to this road.
So, when they put the, when they put the actual road in, somebody did all of the venting?
Right, they didn't stake it out. They didn't stake it out.
They didn't stake it out.
So, they just put it in the wrong place, and it happens to be on my client's property and cleared 10,000 square feet.
Let's just be clear, hold on a second. We're not here to talk about roads.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand.
My question, was this a minor subdivision or a major subdivision?
It doesn't matter. We're here to talk about whether or not her client is going to get additional clearing rights.
Correct.
Because the road's in the wrong place.
The driveway.
No, because the road's there.
The driveway.
Whether it's in the wrong place or not is something else you will have to work out with...
He has the right to right now.
This young lady and her client and your neighbors.
Well, I think there's sufficient neighbors that are interested in...
Interested in that road.
Seeing that being...
Sure, because that would give access to your parcel.
Yes, and also it would, you know, it's just kind of a winding path at this point.
There's a process to bring, you have to get a petition, the town will prove and assess everyone's taxes.
Well, if Ted Sharitz was still here, he would tell me how to do it, but...
Well, it's, it's Town Law 200, you have to get a petition...
Is that road review?
With more than 50% of the adjoining property owners, and then there's a public hearing, and then the town goes in, they improve the road, and it's assessed over everyone's taxes, over a 20-year period, I believe. So, you have, you always have that option to do that.
Well, can I request that this hearing be left open for written comment?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll have written comments, 30 days, sure.
We'll keep it open 30.
How many days?
30 days.
30. Thank you.
Okay, my client is in contract to sell the property, so I don't know if that's going to affect him, because I know that people are interested to get it, so 30 days is common to hold it open for public.
In other words, we're closing, closing. Well, in other words, we're closing, closing the hearing for now, and 30 days, you know...
Written comment period.
Okay, so can I get a date as to when we can expect the decision?
Yes, July 11th.
30 days from today.
Well, it has to be our next hearing date, we'll have it on the calendar for July 11th.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, not hearing anyone, we'll close with a 30-day written comment period.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Posed, extensions, six in favor, five in favor, two absent. Okay, number three is Scuttle Bridge.
Do we have notice? Okay, please take notice, and in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, June 13, 2019, at 6:00 PM prevailing time, at the Southampton Town Hall, at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application entitled "Scuttle Bridge LLC." The site plan application is for the construction of a single-family dwelling with accessory structures and access driveway located in the CR 11 district, and situated within the agricultural overlay district, Act for Protection Overlay District on the west side of Ocean Road, within the Hamlet of Bridgehampton, at 2166 Scuttle Hole Road, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 939118, by order of the planning board of the town of Southampton, Phil Keith, Secretary.
Good evening, Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning for the owners. I did submit an original copy of a letter from Preston Phillips, one of the neighbors in support of the project. I am here tonight to establish the board's jurisdiction and request an adjournment, as my client wanted to be here tonight for this discussion, and he has come down with some health issues and is unable to be here. So we would like to request, I believe it's the July 25th meeting, for this to be discussed.
Okay.
We have to take testimony.
Yeah, we can still take.
Is there someone here who'd like to speak to this application, please? Sorry.
My name is Darlene Javits, we just purchased a residence at 2148 Scuttle Hole Road, which is adjacent to where the driveway is proposed, over here. There's already been some clearing and a driveway being paved, and I'm just curi, and this, it seems to be an expanding nursery coming here, and I'm just wondering what the proposed use is for the land that's adjacent to the town lot, because there's a buffer there, from which my understanding is that can't be cleared, and there's already been some clearing, so I see where the house, the residence is proposed, but I'm not sure what the use is in front of the residence, heading towards Scuttle Hole Road. I don't know if it's leased property, or what's going on, so I don't know if this is an appropriate question, but I'm just curious what's going to happen.
Happening, well, there's a certain percent...
Here's its agricultural land, it's, this is an application to build a house on a 16-acre property, and they're either going to keep the agricultural, agriculture going on the remainder of the portion, or they could turn it into a front lawn, which they can do.
Okay, but the proposed building is only what I'm seeing on here.
Yes.
Yes.
That's our only jurisdiction.
And the clearing on the budding part of the driveway, where they have the 30-foot setback?
Technically, they can clear the whole lot, and, because it's agricultural land, so a farmer could come in tomorrow and just clear it all, putting corn and potatoes.
Is it being used now? You're saying it's being used?
Yeah, there, it seems to be like a tree nursery that they're expanding.
So one of the main reasons that this board has to look at it is to decide the best place for that house, so it preserves the ag soils, because it's in an agricultural overlay district.
So this isn't a preemption to trying to subdivide the entire property? I mean, that's not what the intent is?
Not at this point, but that doesn't mean that down the road, they couldn't do that.
It's also constrained with wetlands, cattle holes, it's a very constrained site.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for answering my questions.
It's going to be reheard on the 25th of July, if you want to come down, no more.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thanks. Did you print your name on the signing sheet?
Yes.
Good.
Someone else? Yes, please.
Me and I.
You have to come up to the podium for the recording equipment.
We can hear you, but the, the audio recorder can't.
Hello, my name is Tolan Sheriff, and I'm the owner of 2168 Scuttle Hole Road, which is right here, and, you know, I, Michael's my neighbor, and I'd be happy to wait, I mean, I came from Greenwich tonight, so I didn't realize that this was being rescheduled, but I'd be happy to wait to talk about what my thoughts are until the 25th, if that would be most courteous to him.
And we'll know more by that time, because you'll have, we'll have a whole presentation of the application.
Okay, and I, is it, I mean, I've just seen this, is that all there is?
That's it.
That's it, okay, all right, well, thank you very much.
Just print your name in on the signing sheet, if you get a chance, thanks.
Daphne, you want to say anything, or that's it? Well, just for the 25th, right?
Motion to adjourn to the 25th?
Motion.
Wait, I thought there was somebody else.
Is that somebody else?
Ma'am, do you want to be heard?
No.
Do you want to be heard?
I was just curious where...
You just have to come up to the podium.
Oh, okay. Motion to adjourn at the 25th?
Motion by Dennis, adjourned, second by Phil, all in favor.
Aye.
Posed, extensions, five in favor, two, two absent.
Motion to adjourn.
And motion to adjourn by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor. Posed, extensions, five in favor. Two absent, we are...
Do they ever give any more notice of a, of a adjournment or cancellation like this?
No, this is your notice, you're on notice.
No, meaning so if you come down on the 25th, if he's sick again, will we know?
You can call in, and...
This is a two-and-a-half hour ride for me.
Yeah, sure.
You just found out this afternoon.
So call the planning department.
Yes, call the planning department and say...
There's a staff member here.
Yep. Ask for Jackie Fenland.
Okay.
Jack, she's a staff member.
I'll write that down, thank you very much.